Programming on WCS TV channel 180 is made possible in part through donations from your McMinnville State Farm agents, Lee Holland, Norm Barnes, Neil Helton, and Bill Sackman.
Programming on WCS TV is brought to you in part by donation from Robert Oliver Bratcher of the Stanley and Bratcher Law Firm, located at 100 West Main Street in McMinnville, Tennessee.
All right, this time I'll call the meeting to order in Warren County School Board. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to have a second.
Sir.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like aye? Motion passes.
Everyone stands for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I do all that. Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve the consent.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like aye? Motion passes. Student advisory.
Does he have the report? He has the report.
Student advisory has provided their report. I think each of us have that in front of us. That is my dollars now. We're supposed to present tomorrow. We're actually cheering again. Not making excuses for them, but that's our excuse. See if I have any questions, student advisory.
Any of our athletes are going pretty well. I think we've got our schedules there. Our archery team ranked fifth in the state, a high school team. And Austin Evans ranked fifth in the high school male division with archery. So, very pleased with that. Back page, our choir ensemble has been invited to perform at Disney again. Sixteen seventeen will perform this year in the Candlelight Processional in December. So, Christmas, our choir will be making its second trip. Mr. Holmes and I were proud to make that trip this year. It was very nice. Right. There we go. Very enjoyable. And we'll probably recognize our FFA winners hopefully at some point in time. But, we had three state winners from Tennessee in Red FFA Convention. Clay Prater, Tennessee State Proficiency winner in swine production. Austin Berry, Tennessee State Scholar Placement. And Warren Griston, Tennessee State Scholar Program. And there's Ms. Holmes. And we've completed our fourth.
Yeah, anything else you might say?
Oh, have you only saved everything?
I was just going over the highlights. If you'd like to go over the report, we are at you. I was hit by the highlights.
You may want to speak to the survey that you had.
I don't have survey. What all did you say?
I was hit by the highlights.
Well, here's the survey. It's like fifteen. Okay, that's awesome. I mean, it's very basic, just the regular survey. And then if you want to take one out, you can take that out. It's just, you're being sent to it. Other than that, it's just...
Put them on the survey door.
We're gonna try to get that out. If y'all approve, it's the same survey we did last year. And if it's okay, if you don't have anything to add to or take away or whatever you need to do with that survey, let me know and I'll get it changed. We want to get the results in and hopefully reported at the next meeting. That's what our goal is.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion to approve the student advisory survey?
We will, but before we do that, does anybody have any additions or additions that you would...
I think so. I believe there are four middle school elementary schools in Warren County for the archery state tournament that were in the top twenty in the state.
I believe that was five.
Was that five?
And also, I think, Mr. Cox, eighteen state FFA degrees in addition to statewide ones. This is about the largest number we've had. The largest, yeah, eighteen. Confidence to the FFA.
Does anybody have any additional questions that they want added to the survey?
So, you planning on doing this?
Well, I usually send it to Katrina Haley and she puts it on the website. So, I'll contact all the elementary schools and the surrounding schools. The only problem is, last year, we just did a sampling of the high school because with all the stuff that's going on right now, we just couldn't, didn't survey with all the kids and have them take it. So, we did a sampling of populations that could go to the computer lab and do it for us. But, we've usually had pretty good results with the elementary schools, you know, getting their kids in there and pretty much having close to a hundred percent of their kids take it. But, yeah, it'll be up on, she'll put it, I guess, on Survey Monkey. She puts it on and puts it on the website, so it's easy for the teachers to get to.
And what will be six through twelve?
Yes. Six or seven, I think it's seven through twelve that we do. But, we can add six if we need to.
I think question three has six.
Okay.
The April meeting.
April and March. The one we covered.
The one we covered. Great, okay.
And that probably stay away from, it might be better that way you stay away from testing window because they don't kick in by the Friday.
There's no additions or subtractions. Do we have a motion to approve the survey?
I make a motion to approve the thousand and thirty survey.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Close like aye?
Sorry, there's still your thunder.
Very well done.
Thank you. If there's any additions or additions on that survey after, just let me know.
One other thing, for all of the ones that went to scope, we want to stick in the key.
Okay.
Tommy Smith, Trey Ratcliffe, Jayden Poder, Lucy March. If you could present those to me. Professor, so to scope. At this time, we will skip recognitions for a moment and go into our operations report. Mr. Cox.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple items of the operations report for you. First of all, is our Kelly Services educational staffing contract. We happy to have with us tonight Ms. Morgan. We have a local person here. We have Will Seckus and we have Rob Lawson. So, we're proud to have them with us. Just kind of an update of where we've been at last year. We rebid and we stayed with Kelly. We've been meeting every first Thursday of the month. And most of these folks could hear most of the time in the other meetings that we've had. Last meeting, brought in Mr. Mansfield, the principal's husband. Got information, you know, from him. And we've asked all of our principals to provide us documentation of things that have been going on with Kelly Services and, you know, discussing those at that meeting. So, it's been going very well. We still struggle with trying to get the pool of subs up, but we're working on that. I think we are probably higher now than we have been with the pool of substitutes. And the two items that you have in front of you are the last year bill rate and the amount we pay our subs. Look at that. Which was fifty-four, fifty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents is when our subs are taken home. Our bill rate is seventy-two dollars per substitute right now. And, you know, as we were discussing, trying to raise that rate, and we talked about that last year, we wanted to really see if we could incentivize the rate. And we have a proposal that I wanted you to take a look at for increasing the substitute pay to sixty dollars. Of course, that would increase our bill rate to seventy-nine forty-four currently. So, kind of be going over some budget figures and I emailed these folks last night as I got closer to those budget figures. And, you know, right now, since we don't have any projection, I'm kind of apprehensive about recommending that we up the rate and start and see where our budget is going to look like. We estimate that we use around six to seven thousand subs in a year. So, in each given day, we're probably gonna have about forty out across the system or using subs somehow for either teacher substitute or professional development or somewhere along those lines. So, at our current rate, if we increase the bill rate, it will probably be somewhere around the forty, fifty thousand dollar mark in our budget. You know, we're estimating six to seven thousand subs a year if we get that. Talking to our budget folks, we can probably handle that if everything stays the same. And some of our subs are paid through federal programs, many of them are paid through general purpose money. So, that's a budgeting element. But, we do have an option to extend the contract for one year sixteen seventeen. I feel like that I would like to recommend that we do extend the contract one year. And then if we can approve, the current rate is our baseline rate as we develop the budget. And if it's agreeable with Kelly Services as we develop the budget, see that we may be able to afford to increase the pay, that we bring it back to the board at that time and then ask if we can do that. But, I'll try to answer any questions. And if the chairman's permission, if Mr. Seckus or Lawson or Audrey doesn't come in like I have.
Well, the one thing I would just add is the markup doesn't change. Our percentage is the same. It doesn't, you know, the request for the increase on the pay rate is to try to help increase the number of recruits that we bring in if we were a pro substitute group. And that's, you know, at this point, something that we would like to look at. But, you know, I think the way that you just explained it, to try to look at it as you go forward in the budget makes a lot of sense. And we'll see where we are. Because ultimately, we have to keep track of what's going on in the marketplace and we will bring that information to on a consistent basis.
We have, I did a little track that, you know, back. You know, it has remained the same for a period of years. I think I went back to two thousand and ten from as far back as I could go. And I think we increased it from, in two thousand and ten, it was fifty dollars. In two thousand and eleven, it's increased to fifty-four thirty-eight. Been fifty-four thirty-eight until now. So, you know, and then the bill rate was reduced in two thousand and thirteen from seven seven eighty-six to seventy-two. So, you know, we've saved a little money from thirteen, fourteen, fifteen school year with the bill rate. You know, it's getting a little bit harder to recruit those substitutes provided there's other jobs that they can get for higher rate pay and they are vital to our system. So, you know, that would be my recommendation is if we did approve that at the base rate at present before the budget allows and we bring it back for an increase. And I've been, you know, satisfied with the service that we've gotten, the responsiveness that Kelly has had with me and willing to meet with me on a monthly basis and make the trip from Atlanta or make the trip from Nashville. And, you know, our principals are keeping me aware of things that... And, you know, some of our higher schools, there's some days that we don't have subs at the, you know, high school and middle school. And we try to look around those and they make me aware of that. We try to work with the best we can.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, you know, I'm totally in agreement with the idea of going ahead with the contract extension with the provides so that you come back and we see what our budget situation looks like. I'm definitely in favor of increasing the take-home pay for our substitutes. As the gentleman said, we need, we need to be recruiting. The employment situation, you know, we're under fact unemployment. But, not only do we need, do we need to, more depth on the bench, but also we need maybe substitutes who are a little bit better prepared educationally themselves to go in. Because we, you know, we just can't afford to miss an educational or real instructional. We just can't afford to do that. My concern, and Bobby and I have discussed this, and I believe Bobby has done the very best he could in negotiating this. My concern is that of your markup, I realize a certain portion escalates, your cost escalates if we escalate the bill rate with the aim of increasing the take-home pay that you make. But, I can't help but think that there's a certain component in here, just the administrative overhead, that really isn't affected by how much we're actually paying. And that component, whatever that is, whatever that number is, this one point three two four markup, I'd much rather that go into the pay envelope, paycheck for the teacher. I just, that's, that's a small degree of discomfort and I guess that's the price we have to pay to do better for our subs. So, with that, I mean, you know, I'm definitely in support of, you know, the extension. I do appreciate the efficiency. Bobby was very complimentary of your efficiency and responsiveness. We need that and we compliment you for that. But, we'll bring it back and see if it will work in terms of our budget. But, I'll let you know right now, I'm definitely in favor of increasing that, the take-home rate.
We'll certainly, you know, look at every consideration and we're leaving every month. And part of the reason for that is so we can do course correction on whatever, whatever we're doing that could affect the outcome and make it better. And we certainly see you as a partner, you've been a partner. And we do our best to try to share in that, our relationship as much as we can. And if there's an opportunity for me to look at that from an administrative standpoint, I certainly will.
We appreciate that.
Yes.
We appreciate that very much. So, we need a motion for the contract extension.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm, if you're ready to move now.
Do I have a motion to extend the contract?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Just have one question. The markup rate, is that something standard that you guys do?
As far as...
I mean, is that in the business?
Yes.
Being negotiated every time or is that just...
It's negotiated on a consistent basis, yes, sir.
I think that's something we can, our budget figures kind of flesh out and take a look at that. Because it has kind of fluctuated a little bit. One point four three, currently it's one point three two four. And it's been one point three two four since thirteen.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like aye? Motion passes.
I need, I guess, a second.
Yes.
And I appreciate, again, appreciate you making the trip and making the effort up to come up here. Pretty, pretty good weight and we'll continue to try to work on that.
It was very sick.
We'll be like so. Same, same, just good. I think the next item that we have is also one of our party vendors, which is Durham School Services, our best service. Sherry Lane is with us also tonight. Appreciate her being here. Again, the, we have just a little background. Entered into our contract with Durham, I think, five years ago. We have a three-year contract with two years of extension. That has gone, gone well. I think we've made progress. I know we've made progress with the safety buses. I think we purchased, Durham purchased twelve buses that we didn't want to purchase over the last five years for the ten of right at a hundred thousand dollar bus. So, the service has gone well. I think Sherry has done lately in the last couple of years. I mean, it's her second year, her third year.
Third year.
Making sure that, you know, we're trying to, again, recruit drivers and keep routes as good as we can keep them and, you know, stay within our budget. Thinking in your packet, and we've discussed this at our retreat, we will be looking to renew the contract for another three-year contract with two extensions. Bobby's looked at the contract and actually did some of it. And I gave you at our retreat, the estimated increase, which is around three percent moving forward. So, we would still be right around our cap of one point seven million in our budget for the coming year. And there would be a little bit of gradual increase there as buses are purchased from Durham and some of our buses go offline. So, if approved, this contract will have an increase in wage for drivers of three percent. Over the five years of the contract, there will be eight new buses purchased and six cascade buses, meaning that they will be full of buses from other areas, probably on special ed buses. Those are cascade buses. All digital cameras will be installed in all buses, so we can improve on that. We're still cycling some of those out to improve that. Our training, of course, the training programs, preventive maintenance will still be there. The full complement of drivers, including subs. We're looking at a bus app that would go out to parents. Where parents could actually, much like our Skyward system, where they would have a login specifically for their time and they could track where the bus is at for their time. So, that's kind of being worked on for Durham. GPS, of course, we have GPS now on all buses, so we can track all buses in case of weather. Durham will continue to provide a twenty-five hundred dollars scholarship or two twenty-five hundred dollars scholarships for our students graduating soon. And they've been involved in our community at a lot of times. They've seen our Christmas parade and being involved in that and, you know, homecoming parade and things of that type and gathering school supplies. So, they have been a good partner with us. So, my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, would be that we approve the contract that we discussed at the rates that we have discussed for the next five years, or three years or two years of extension possibility.
You have presented the three-year contract with your potential with Durham Bus Services. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the Durham Bus Service, our three-year contract with two-year extension.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Just this one question. As I remember, with the original contract that negotiated and agreed on in two thousand and eleven, and I don't, honestly, I don't think I went back and actually read the finished agreement, but I know we had talked about sourcing replacement tires from the buses from Bridgestone. Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay. Bridgestone's been such a great partner in our education program and our community. We just felt like, and Bridgestone, nobody makes a trucker bus tire better than Bridgestone. They're serviceable, high-safety, high-precision tires. So, I appreciate, the reason I brought that up, I happened to see a bus and it encouraged me more that you acquired buses. And that other brand tire was a...
It was on there.
But, when that tire is ready to be replaced...
To be replaced, yes.
To be a Bridgestone, right?
Yes.
Upset, buddy. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do I have all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close like aye? Motion passes.
I think the last item would be Ms. Frank, if you have any information on our reading go.
I'll just share that we just opened our third emergency training we go this week. So, that will last. You know, we have a school that's asked for an extension through April twenty-second. So, I'll be able to share that data at our next board meeting. But, I will have that final data for you at the main meeting. And we are putting together summer reading plans. And in that, really kind of focus on our daydream reading goal. And then just continuing to work with teachers to provide the seven-part class right now. I actually spent all day at Wes doing that today. So, we're continuing our focus. Mr. Price, do you want me to speak to Myon?
Sure.
Okay. Myon is, is a company that's partnering with Toss this summer to provide school systems with free access to downloadable ebooks for students. This is free of charge. We did this last year and it was very successful. I was really, really impressed with the data that we got back. Our students will take an interest inventory before school gets out and a placement test so that the books that are offered to them, it will be both related to interest that they have and their reading level. And then they just have access to that all summer long. It starts in May, it will end August thirty-first, and it's no charge for them. It was a really good thing for our students last year, I think. Somebody else has to share, but again, I was really impressed with the number of books last summer that kids accessed. And that's just, you know, it's really something that can help us combat that summer reading loss with renewed experience. So, I don't know if there's more that you want to say, but we will be, if the board agrees, we'll be signing on to that within a day. Okay, good. Sorry, I missed that.
But, what's the name of this company? Myon?
It's called Myon. N-Y-O-N. And it's, I mean, it's two words put together.
Right. Pallas, Tennessee Organization of School Superintendent has, is in partnership with them. And due to our membership in Pallas, then we get the opportunity to take advantage of those free books. No cost to us, no cost. That's the best kind of, you know, contract, really good. So, we took advantage of that last year and hopefully take advantage of that this year. Thank you, Ms. Frank. Mr. Ed, my last item in the business, recycling program. I have met just briefly with Steve Gillis County. And we are gonna try to get together and see if we can coordinate our efforts with recycling. But, I know you mentioned, you know, phone conversation that you wanted to, you had offered some receptacles for that.
No, it's just, I just want to do a little demonstration. I don't have it ready tonight. But, rather than school system paying out, what was it, eight or nine hundred dollars with the blue plastic containers? I don't know why the blue has to be so much more expensive than the basic black. But, I was able to buy essentially the same container for, I guess, less than thirty dollars. If, if you're okay with black.
I'm okay with white.
For that.
Or you say even better.
Yeah. So, we can, we can have some vinyl. So we can, we can have some vinyl recycling symbols applied to it, local science shops can do that.
Yeah, I think our future center might be able to start this thing.
Well, that's, that's right, yeah. So I'll, I'll try to bring you a prototype, a markup. It'll be here next meeting.
It'll be here. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Before I close, Mr. Chairman, I would like again to thank our construction partners for the work that they've done, and staff here at Irving College for, you know, doing the, the work that they've done, having to teach under construction purposes is, is something that's definitely a challenge, as well as all of our, Bobby, Renee, and at the high school, and I think we've done a pretty good job of that, but I really appreciate quite them. And I want to say thank you to our county commissioners, so Mr. Graham, who's here tonight, and Mr. Savage, who is here as well, and helping us fund those projects, and I think it'll serve Irving College very well, Bobby, but ready very well, and I know it's serving the high school very well right now, so we appreciate you for, for putting that in.
And I think, the, 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 the recognitions. This month, we'd like to recognize, I read this, and I was thinking, boy, this is, making this sad, or what? This is a long time, I was thinking, I guess what her name is, but, I don't know. Regina Woodling, a long time, Lawrence County School and Board. She has devoted much of her life to the education of the students at Centertown, where she was a classroom teacher, ESL teacher, and interventionist. Prior to that, she worked at various schools as a speech pathologist. She is now in her second year of Bobby Ray, working as the school's instructional coordinator. In that capacity, Regina combines all of her previous experiences to assist our teachers in best serving our students. Regina is an amazing and viable teacher and leader. From working with DLCs to scheduling our testing, Regina takes each job as the part with determination and grace. When asked what her job is, she often answers, "I'm her right hand." She is only partly correct. She is my right hand, but also a large part of the heart and soul of our school and my very dear friend. She is irreplaceable and more than deserving of this award and recognition. Ms. Martin, this. Good luck. I think that says a lot. And just for yourself, you know, maybe an employee of your century. Presentant Regina will be recognized in her performance by the Lawrence County School Board of Education, and definitely this time of this. Principal, five-year winner, two thousand and sixteen. Thank you, Ms. Regina.
Regina, I thought I heard you say that. Okay. Thank you. You can either share with Donnie. I'm gonna do that.
All right, this time, we will go to Mr. Zettman for curriculum and chief.
All right, thank you very much. And just one item very quickly this evening, on second reading, prohibition against discrimination and harassment, bullying, intimidation of Asian students. A second reading on policy J C A D. This is essentially what we passed in first reading at the last, last meeting. You may notice a, just a small change in the first paragraph, but otherwise essentially the same. So, Mr. Chairman, I will move for a passage on second reading, policy J C A D.
All right, do we have a motion to pass J C A D on the second reading? Motion. Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second, any discussion? All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Coats like sign?
And that's all the business for curriculum and chief.
At this time, we'll go to Ms. Martin for facilities and resources.
Out of the committee for the facilities and resources management, Mr. Camo was here and felt like the high school wellness center is complete, with the exception of the punchline being needed to be finished. The, the Bobby Ray is in a holding pattern right now, waiting for school to be out to finish the work on the gym. The H V A C is ready to be turned on, the wood will be delivered next week, the graphics are on the floor, and when school leaves, the public school gym will be completed. As far as Irving College, we took a tour, and it looks really, really good. Waiting on the kitchen equipment, the site work is progressing, it's on schedule, the budget is tight, but we are still on the budget. And this summer, they'll have to move the work right along when school is out to finish the project. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I think the process of the vision.
Yeah, and I apologize to you, Mr. Chairman. I forgot that we had an easement agreement on Ben Lowman, so I apologize for that, but I can talk about that, it is in the packet there. Ben Lowman Connect has asked us for a utility easement on the property of West Elementary School, and they just need access to the property to do some crunching and put in, I think, a piece of equipment for their broadband service in that area. So Ben Lowman's looked over that, and everything's good on that end, and Donnie, everything's good from, from here again. So, again, I apologize for that, but I would ask for the board's approval to grant them easement as outlined in the fourth packet for broadband service in that area.
And do we have a motion to approve the easement with Ben Lowman Connect?
I make a motion.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second, any discussion? All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Coats like sign? Motion passes.
I'll follow you, Ms. Prime.
Is there any other further business to bring forward, board? I maintain the motion to adjourn.
Motion like adjourned.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Coats like sign? You're all done, thank you.